Okay, the mixer is on now.
Chris, Bob, Jessica, can you hear us okay? Okay, Chris, can you hear us?
That is what is the problem. I'm not into this. Oh, man.
I'm not sure Commissioner Coops can hear us.
She might not be able to hear. She not here because I don't have the camera yet. I.
Medium, it's probably.
Probably not.
It was hot on the one.
Yeah, this one's. Chris, can you hear us now?
During the Ironman, it was way higher and it was, but that's. Um, in Cambridge. So they don't do anything right in the district.
Now, let's see if she.
I'm going out, Chris, are you there?
Down, down further south like that, it was.
Cambridge is gorgeous.
It was so pretty. I've never been down in that area.
We did a municipal conference there.
The mixer.
Yeah.
Oh. Ah, there it is. It was on my computer. Yep, good.
Like we're fifty turns to go out.
Okay, we're going and ready to go when you are.
Just above that.
Okay.
You know, so anyway.
There's not a lot there.
No.
Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome. This is the work meeting for the Planning Commission for Cottonwood Heights City for this Wednesday, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. As a reminder for those of you who are joining us online, I don't see anybody in the chairs, but there might be somebody off my screen here. This is our work meeting, so this is our chance as a commission to talk through the items on our business agenda and have a discussion about that. If we want any input, we will ask for it, but it's not a time for public input that comes in the business meeting. So with all that said, go ahead and turn it back over to Mike. I'm not sure if you're presenting from the city or.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm the only staff here tonight, so.
Oh, lucky you.
Do it, yeah. Andy's at another committee meeting, so he's still working.
Oh, you guys work a lot after hours.
And so the request tonight, let me get a presentation up here. Is a conditional use request. It's actually an update to a conditional use application that was approved back in early two thousand and fifteen. And let me see, let me stop my camera there. Okay, so the request is an amendment to conditional use permit fourteen zero zero nine, which was one of the Canyon Center. This was phase two of the Canyon Center approval. The phase one of this project was approved, I think, in two thousand and thirteen or two thousand and twelve, and phase one included the parking structure and the office building. Phase two included the, the restaurant, which is now Eight Settlers, the single-family neighborhood built by David Weekly Homes, seventeen single-family homes. And it also included the apartment building that we're discussing tonight, one hundred and twelve units. So that was phase two approved back in two thousand and fourteen. Future phases in the following years, we approved the restaurant, the standalone restaurant, and the hotel just a couple of years ago, and a couple of retail pads just recently. So to this point, every, all the uses in Canyon Center have received their land use entitlement and approval. They're all technically at the building permit phase of, of their process. The only reason this is back is because there's been an amended request to increase the number of units in the multifamily building that was already approved. Also for context, and I'll get into some of the site plans in a minute, but sixteen of the units gained between twelve, one twelve and one forty are, are done so without any modification to the building. There was a, a mix of one and two-bedroom units previously, and, and that mix is still the same. There were never any three-bedroom units. But the previous approval had a bunch of two-story units that were two-bedroom. Those, those no longer exist, so a, a lot of the, the units gained are within that existing footprint by splitting up two-story units into two one-level units. And then twelve units are gained with a minor building expansion that was approved last year by the Architectural Review Commission. And I will just briefly go over the background. This project has been in front of various boards and commissions numerous times with a few changes over the years. This was the, the building in its original form and architecture and design back in two thousand and fifteen. A year later, the, the project was sold to a, a different, a different owner, and, and subsequently, there was a request to update the architecture. So it went from this kind of Alpine architecture to a more modern look in two thousand and sixteen, and that was approved at that time. Again, this is the, the same, really the same site plan as, as was approved originally, but also approved in two thousand and sixteen. So you can see it's a, a U-shaped building, almost an L, but with a, an interior courtyard and a, a square building there. So there was a second amendment made, like I said, in two thousand and twenty to, to not approve any additional use, units, but to expand the footprint, which is the authority of the Architectural Review Commission. The, the expansion was for the purpose of adding units, but it was made clear at the time that that request would need to be approved by the Planning Commission. So that the two areas in red are the main areas that were affected by the increased footprint. The, the entrance to the courtyard and courtyard area shrunk down, got a little smaller in size to accommodate additional units and a fitness center and other things. And then some units were added on the, the northwest corner that expanded the building slightly on, on that corner as well. So here's a, a before and after from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty. You can see the, the change in the building there, just a, a, a couple areas of, of massing increase. But again, largely, the, the footprint is, is has been unaffected and unchanged since two thousand and fourteen, especially as it relates to adjacent, single-family neighbors and adjacent Canyon Center projects. The one on the left was two thousand and sixteen, the, the one on the right was the, the expansion that accommodates the, the request in front of you tonight.
Did they modify the architecture?
This, this is before and after, so.
Landscape architecture.
No, not, not from two thousand and sixteen. It's the same. Obviously, the, the courtyard entrance is smaller, but that's the only real change. So on the top on this slide is two thousand and sixteen, on the bottom is two thousand and twenty. Again, you can see that the design and, and style is, is not changed greatly. The massing is, and, you know, the articulation is a little bit different, but this has gone through the Architecture Review Commission. And, and that is, so that's just some context there. There were some more renderings in the staff report as well. So I, I want to talk about the scope tonight because, like, every project in Canyon Center that the commission considers, there's a lot of public interest in this one. The, the scope of this particular request is an amendment to the previous conditional use approval. But, but the commission's scope and review authority tonight is, is really limited to the impact of the twenty-eight units being added. Like I said, every other phase of Canyon Center has been already approved and entitled. So, so the authority here tonight is, is the impact of those additional units from one hundred and twelve to one hundred and forty. I have this here. I won't read through it. I, I've said this numerous times of commission, but this is just a reminder of conditional use authority per the state code. I'll just point your attention to A one here. And a, a land use authority, which is the Planning Commission, shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. So what that means is, uh, within the scope of the project, which is the extra twenty-eight units, the commission's role is to determine if there are any, uh, potential negative impacts caused by those twenty-eight units. And if so, can they be mitigated with reasonable conditions? I'll go into an impact analysis of, of a few different things here, and then I want to spend some time talking about traffic, because that's the, the number one comment we've heard so far from people. First, density. Density in this project was, was originally calculated for the entire Canyon Center project. It is not confined to the individual parcels, uh, which, which makes sense because at the time of original approval, it was one project. It's been sold off and subdivided for, for ownership reasons, but, uh, so we look at density, uh, over the entire ten and a half to eleven acres of the project. So the permitted density in the mixed-use zone is thirty-five units to the acre. Um, that's, that's permitted by right, not even a conditional use. The existing project density today, which is one hundred and twelve units entitled, plus seventeen of the existing single-family homes, uh, is twelve units per acre approximately, uh, twelve or, or less slightly. Again, spread across the whole Canyon Center project. The proposed density by adding twenty-eight units and, and factoring in the other units that have already been approved is, is only fourteen. So we're well under the maximum density. I, I, you know, the maximum density is probably more driven by setbacks and height and massing standards, but, but we're, we're not even, uh, half of, of what it could be uh, on this project in terms of residential density. So building height and massing, again, I, I went over the massing expansion, the footprint modification that was approved by the ARC last year. No building height is increased, and, and the whole, uh, project is still subject to the building height standards that were established back in two thousand and fifteen in that project, uh, staff report. Shane, by the way, Tim, Tim said to come, uh, talk to him when he got here. Sorry. Okay, unit counts. Um, there was some concern raised that we were getting rid of, uh, or the applicant was proposing to get rid of a, a lot of large units and, and build out a, a lot of one-bedroom units and the impacts that that might have. To the best of our ability, we went through and analyzed what was, uh, in our record previously and, and what we have currently. The, the mix, both projects, uh, propose a mix of one and two-bedroom units and, and no three-bedroom units in either the two thousand and fifteen version of this or today's version. The two thousand and fifteen approval, the, the split was approximately sixty percent of those units, uh, one-bedroom and forty percent two-bedroom. For context, that number, these are approximate, um, was about, let's see, sixty-six, uh, one-bedroom and, and forty-five to forty-six two-bedroom. The current proposal, uh, it does skew heavier, uh, into one-bedroom units. About a seventy-thirty split, uh, total number of about uh, ninety-five to ninety-six one-bedroom and, and in the ballpark of forty-five two-bedroom. So the two-bedroom doesn't actually go down much at all. Uh, there are thirty more, approximately thirty more one-bedroom units proposed. Again, uh, sixteen of the additional units are, are gained within the existing footprint of the building. Twelve, uh, required the expansion. The parking. Minimum code requirement for mid-rise apartments, which is any apartment building under five stories, is one point two-three parking stalls per dwelling unit, and, and this is generated by the uh, Institute of Traffic Engineers Manual. We call it the I T E. And, and that's what we use to determine parking requirements for any development in the city. Two thousand and fifteen approval, uh, per the staff report that, that I reviewed, proposed a hundred and eighty total parking stalls to serve a hundred and twelve maximum units, so one point six-one stalls per unit. The two thousand and twenty-one proposal, the request in front of you tonight, is, uh, two hundred and forty-nine total stalls for a hundred and forty maximum units. Originally, when this was proposed, I think this context helps, um, there, there was discussion at the time that the the two levels of parking, um, and I should clarify, there are, there are two underground parking levels proposed. So structured parking will handle a, a vast majority of the, uh, parking demand for this project. In two thousand and fifteen, the, the tax increment financing project area was still being established, and there, there was a, an initial discussion of potentially adding a, a, an additional parking level to that building that would be open to the public. That financing did not, did not see its way through to approval, so that, that was never approved or anticipated for this, uh, when the project area was approved. So I think that is largely the reason for the, the big jump in, um, total parking stalls without a, a real change in the footprint of the building is, uh, a lot of the stalls shown on the original plan were earmarked as potential public parking stalls, and, and those were never financed. So, so from a parking ratio standpoint, we have actually a, a better ratio, uh, with the current proposal, even though there are more units than we did in two thousand and fifteen, and in both cases are, are significantly over the minimum, uh, parking ratio required. Okay, traffic. Uh, this is, this is kind of the big one for Canyon Center every time this project comes up. In two thousand and fourteen, and again, updated in two thousand and sixteen, there were project-wide traffic studies done by Hales Engineering based on, um, the, the previous anticipated mix of development and intensity in that site that's listed here. And again, in, in those phases, the city previously approved all phases of the development under the conditions anticipated in the traffic study, so um, I, I will fully admit that reading the traffic study today with our city engineer, um, there, there are some concerns from the old traffic studies, but they were approved and, and, um, you know, we can't use the additional twenty-eight units to fix problems that were, uh, previously identified but approved. That being said, there, there is one solution being proposed, um, that, that does actually help fix a problem, and I'll get to that in a minute. So for this in request, staff requested that the developer provide an update to the traffic study to both account for the additional twenty-eight units and the impact those units will have on traffic generation in the site, and also to, to validate that the data they use, the trip generation and, and the traffic data was accurate and, and updated, and not based on, you know, data from two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and eleven, or, you know, some previous date. So per the traffic study we received, the twenty-eight additional units generates one hundred and forty-six additional vehicle trips per day. The peak hour demand, uh, is estimated to be in the evening, so, uh, of the times they analyze, they predict that evening will be the, the time of day where the apartment project itself generates the most vehicle trips, both in and out of the project. Uh, that's, that's a total of sixty-two trips with the hundred and forty units, which is peak hour demand in the evening hour. With the hundred and, and twelve units, or thirteen units, I guess, is what they studied, uh, that was fifty-one trips, so the twenty-eight units increases the, the peak hour trips by eleven. So the traffic study conclusion is that peak hour, the eleven additional trips add no more than two additional cars to any single traffic movement in the project. So there's some assumptions that some of that peak hour traffic will be coming into the site, some will be going out of the site, and will be going out, uh, various directions. To continue, um, I, I sent you two emails kind of back to back because we, we came down to the wire getting these new traffic studies. We did get the traffic trip generation data. They actually took new counts, uh, on October thirteenth, so just about a week ago, exactly a week ago, in that evening peak hour. And in that report, they said they, they inflated the, the traffic generation numbers to account for average turning movements, uh, you know, when, when demand is at an average throughout the year. So they inflated it nineteen percent to account for average turning movements, and they inflated it, uh, twenty-two point eight percent to account for winter peak hour conditions at those intersections. The analysis at, at our request also provided a, a, an analysis of the, uh, or a review of the a modification to the Canyon Center Parkway and Wasatch Boulevard intersection, particularly, uh, leaving the project site and turning left onto Wasatch Boulevard northbound. That in the two thousand and fourteen traffic study was identified at a level of service F. So that, that was a failing movement in the two thousand and fourteen, um, traffic study. And, and I, I, I don't know why at the time that the city staff and the city engineer did not require that to be mitigated, but it wasn't. However, we asked this applicant to analyze what would happen if we got rid of that left turn. We restricted that left turn movement. Um, and in their traffic study, they, they concluded that that, eliminating that left turn out of the project onto Wasatch improves the level of service at that intersection, uh, to a C. Just as a refresher, level of service, uh, refers to the weight, the standard wait time at an intersection, so how long it takes to get through an intersection to make a particular turning movement. From a regulatory standpoint, the state and the city, and it's commonly accepted that anything level of service between A and D is acceptable, but F generally requires mitigation. So while I can't speak to why mitigation wasn't required previously, I, I think it should have been. They have analyzed that a, a physical, uh, restriction of a left turn there will, uh, will bring that intersection up to a, a passing level of service. And this developer has actually committed to, to, uh, building that improvement, even though it's not directly caused by the, the twenty-eight units. Uh, we had the city engineer look at this, and I just got, uh, his feedback, uh, about an hour ago. So the methodology in the updated traffic memos is legitimate. It, it follows standard traffic study practice. The additional twenty-eight units does not create additional undue burden beyond what was previously identified that would require any additional mitigation. However, the city does, uh, support the restricted movement, um, that was analyzed at that Canyon Center Parkway, Wasatch Boulevard intersection uh, to, to eliminate left turns, which would, uh, greatly improve the level of service. to eliminate left turns, which would greatly improve the level of service at that intersection, and therefore bring all of the intersections in the project actually up to an acceptable level of service. And then finally, an important update, the project area and the road system, you know, before a project's built out, traffic studies are all we have to anticipate the impacts of traffic. Once it's built out, and even as it's building out, we'll get a better sense of how traffic actually moves and what the conditions really are. And this, at the end of the day, is a city street network and something the city will continue to monitor and make adjustments to as needed. Along those lines, a slurry seal, which is a new treatment on the roadway, is actually scheduled right now for next summer. So there are some things we will do as a city to improve site circulation and clarify the lane striping and, you know, address some of the concerns we've heard up to this time. But from a project impact standpoint, the 28 units really doesn't negatively impact the traffic study results that were made back in 2015 and 2016. And I do want to take a minute, these are some of the concerns we've heard, and census is the only item on the agenda. I want to talk about this quickly and then I'll turn it over to the commission for questions. Some of the concerns we've heard that staff does not feel is directly attributable to this request, to the additional 28 units, but are still valid concerns and should be addressed by the city. One is roadway striping. This was restriped at the city's request by the Canyon Center developer, I think last year. And the new striping allow, it provides a shoulder on the kind of south and west side of the project that allows for some on-street parking, and it restricts on-street parking on the north side. Previously, there was a middle turn lane, kind of a middle lane that really isn't necessary of a road of this nature. There's not a lot of conflict points and intersections where you'd need that middle lane. So what has happened is the middle lane disappeared, the two travel lanes have moved as far north and east as possible, and then a shoulder was built that, actually today, it's like striped parking stalls. The striping on that wasn't done, it's not egregiously bad, but it wasn't done perfectly, so the lane narrows down in some points and the parking is wider than it should be in some points. But like I said, the slurry seal scheduled next year, we'll go in and correct all of that. Another concern that was raised by residents is right here, the intersection of Canyon Center Parkway and Racket Club Drive. When you're leaving the project right now, there's a right turn lane and a left turn lane. And that's really not necessary, funneling traffic out onto a residential street, there's very little traffic that actually turns left because this goes into a neighborhood and doesn't go anywhere. So what that does is push the intersection getting into the site far down to the south and creates kind of a sharp turning movement. Nothing specifically terrible with it, but part of our restriping next year will be to correct that as well. There'll just be that one lane that takes you left or right out, one line in and then, you know, the median area that we'll make sure is restricted from parking near the intersection. There's another on-street parking existing condition, a couple of them, one being the staff parking for Porcupine and Alpha Coffee. That's on Racket Club Drive, so the cars you see there today, they've been parking there for years at this point. The city can keep looking at ways to address any issues that arise, but at the end of the day, that's a a public street and on-street parking is legal, and again, it's a little outside the scope of the request tonight to mitigate that condition because it's, so far as we're aware, not being caused by the 28 units here. The other parking concern we've heard quite commonly is parking in front of this single-family neighborhood, the David Weekly Homes neighborhood here. Again, when this project was originally built, there was no shoulder there, and these homes all have individual trash and recycling bins, and they, today, we were, I was out there today with another staff member, it's garbage day today, and they stack out their bins right on the curb here. When there was no shoulder there, that was a big concern because there was nowhere really to put the traffic bins except either on the sidewalk or in the lane of traffic. So the restriping to add the shoulder has helped that. There's further desire from these residents to allow, you know, some sort of permit-only parking in front of this project because there's very limited overflow parking in there. There's a petition process that the city council can consider that we have distributed that information to that neighborhood, and I think they probably have a pretty good chance of of getting that program, but again, it's outside the scope of this project and something the city council can consider once we receive that petition. And then lastly, I touched on this briefly, the intersections. Like I said, the Racket Club Drive intersection is striped a little weird right now, we plan to fix that in a year. The other intersection that was identified as failing in 2014 is this intersection here on the southeast side of the project. It's that, really, it's the left turn from this project onto Fort Union, and if you've ever done this, you know, this is a hill here, a northbound Wasatch. So when you're looking for cars, you don't see a car until it's, you know, not very far away, and at that point, it's driving really fast, which makes that left turn northbound movement really slow and really hard, backs up the traffic queue and results in that level of service F. So by getting rid of that left turn movement, the level of service there no longer is a failing condition. So again, while it's outside the scope of the 28 units, the developer has indicated that he is supportive of that and will will pay to have that improvement installed and work with the city on the way we want to see that done. There will be some collaboration with UDOT there as well because it's on to their right of way. So while this isn't going to answer all of the traffic concerns with the Canyon Center project in its entirety, you know, we look really closely because we understand the sensitivity of this project. We don't see a real negative additional impact by the additional 28 units. We do see concerning conditions that were already approved, that as a city, that's now our obligation to monitor and and fix, and we think that left turn limitation does that to some extent in that particular scenario. The restriping scheduled will help with that as well, and again, we'll monitor it over time. So from a city standpoint, following our our authority with the conditional use process, we as staff are supportive of the request, we feel it meets the conditional use criteria put upon a land use authority, and we recommend approval of this. We do recommend, though, maybe not as a direct condition, but that the applicant work with the city to make that intersection enhancement and resolve that level of service on that intersection there. Okay, that was a lot of talking, what questions do we have?
Thank you, Mike, you obviously spent a lot of time with it, it's appreciated.
This is Bob Wilde, I'm just calling to let you all know that my mother-in-law died this afternoon and I'm going to have to leave the meeting.
I'm so sorry, Bob.
See you next month.
Thanks, Bob, good luck.
Thank you, Bob.
Oh, that's too bad. You know, just, you might want to mute him because it looks like he just walked away, just.
Yeah, got it.
Sorry, I did it.
Oh, we did it at the same time, okay. Oh, Chris, you're muted, I think.
Oh, I'm so sorry, and what I was asking was if you would mute Bob because he just walked away from his computer just to make sure he gets his privacy.
Yeah, we got, we.
Okay.
Oh, that's okay, thanks, Joe.
And you probably didn't hear me say thank you to you, Mike, you obviously spent a lot of time and asked for the kind of information you knew that we would be asking for, and, you know, you've heard all the comments from the public, and it's appreciated that you're addressing these issues that are coming up. Commissioners?
Question on when they redo the redirect, so no more left, I know this is, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Isn't there a concern with the traffic being driven the other way?
Yes, there is.
And going to Wine Saff and.
Yeah, so we looked at that, we asked them to address that, what they said. Let's see, you can see this. So previously, those, so the Racket Club intersection and the Fort Union intersection, they're the big ones, they were at a B and a C, which is, D is what we're aiming for, B and C are well above that. But what they say here is standard practice in traffic engineering for A and D to be satisfactory. Hales Engineering anticipates the Racket Club, Fort Union, and the Canyon Center, Wasatch intersection will operate at acceptable levels of service with the project traffic added. Which is to say that dispersed traffic in the opinion of Hales Engineering, and our city engineer didn't have any reason to to question that, they don't overburden any of those other intersections, they add traffic, there's no doubt they'll add cars, but they don't overburden, they don't push us down to an E or an F.
Thank you.
Following up on that, is that presuming that the hotel is at their normal occupancy, all the restaurants are at their normal occupancy, and that the full project is at its normal occupancy in its winter time?
Yeah, so what they did is they, the presumption is this unit mix here, so 144 hotel rooms and all those square footages at standard capacity. And then, like I think I put in one of these slides, they inflated the counts they took last week, they inflated those two different ways, actually, one to account for kind of peak non-winter traffic averages, and even higher to account for winter peak.
And Mike, the fact that they only inflated it 3% for winter versus October, I would make the supposition that the traffic right now in the shoulder seasons is artificially low. And just having watched the first weekend in October, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that the traffic counts in the canons were actually double what they were on the worst snow days that we had this year, which is unprecedented. So that October 16th number, I'm a little nervous about that, I must say, that we've literally probably picked the very, very bottom of the curve. I appreciate that they've gone through this process, and I also, the number that they use from the standard that we use as a city, you know, I might point out that the average the average household size in Utah is the largest in the nation at over 3.1, I believe, and the average in the United States is less than half of that, so in terms of capacity, I think there's an argument to be made that we need potentially even double the parking that is required if we're going to extrapolate that and make it the Utah-specific number. I might also add that a turn lane, if the hotel is fully occupied, the restaurants are partially occupied, and all those residences are occupied, they're going to desperately need a turn lane to get people in and out as they're going in and out of those different places, and the majority of those peoples are turning out onto Wasatch Boulevard are going to be turning left to go to work. And so, you know, I appreciate that, you know, they would eliminate that left-hand turn, but that means that those people are going to turn right onto Wasatch Boulevard and find some unusual, probably not ideal U-turn, or they're going to be pushed to Fort Union, or they're going to be pushed down into the neighborhoods, which, I mean, the project's been approved, so we have to kind of accept that, but I I think that the load on Wasatch Boulevard, you know, eliminating that to get a better grade, I don't know that that mitigates any of the separate issues that we're dealing with there. You know, I appreciate that, you know, we took the 100 spaces that were going to be for the public and that public use area and the park space, it was going to be this great community space, and some of that's gone away.
The public park is still, that's across the street.
Okay.
They, I reviewed the minutes of the old conversation, they threw out the idea of a second level of structured parking, that would be just like the parking across the street, and they said it was contingent on financing, and then the financing
didn't work out.
They needed to use it all for.
Okay.
So that's what, no park space has been eliminated, just theoretical additional public parking.
The other, the other point I would make is that when the Canyon Racket Club still existed in the early 80s, the parking along the eastern border of Racket Club Drive has always been filled with the duplexes and the multiplexes that are in that Apple Valley area. And so, I mean, I know that it's, you know, some of it is attributed to Alpha and Porcupine, but those employees in many cases are going into the park and ride, and I think are discouraged from parking too much in the neighborhoods by those employers. What's happening is that already people that residentially have been parking on that side of the street for 30-plus years in what has become higher density living situations that we have throughout the city, those spaces are going to continue to be occupied regardless of what we do with that road. And I think the residents in the adjacent home, I think they're used to that, but I think they see that if you're going to up the number of humans that are in an area, being able to move them in and out, I think we've got some unique challenges with the project as it sits. I'm just, I'm nervous about that road, if we were widening that road, if we were adding more parking spaces without increasing the size of the project, I would probably feel more comfortable that we're adding more units and what feels like effectively making egress and ingress more complicated, separate from any of the density issues, I just, I'm concerned about the traffic, that's my input.
So, yeah, certainly, so what the assumptions they made, and I can only rely on the state, the city engineers speak.
You've done a wonderful job.
The data from UDOT and this state kind of methodology, it says right here, in previous years, track, traffic volumes in October are about 81% of average traffic volumes. And yeah, I don't know the rationale for the 19 and the 22.8% inflation. I do know, like, planning a stormwater system or parking in general, you don't plan for the the absolute, you know, worst target plans for Black Friday.
Agreed.
Park, however, when you build a city stormwater, you don't always plan for the 500-year storm because every pipe would be nine feet wide. So you are going to have those, those bad days, and that's where the traffic study, without the project being built out and us observing the impact, only tells us, you know, as much as we can know about the average condition that we can anticipate there. But you're absolutely right, there will be days where it exceeds that volume, and that's where we'll have to continue as a city observing what's the impact here, what are the negatives, you know, what's going on affecting the roads and what can we do to alleviate those concerns?
You know, this discussion actually gets to commissioners, I think, what we have for our decision here tonight as far as approving or not this request for changes to their conditional uses. All of these, all of these tools, like Mike just said, you know, a level of service at an intersection is, how many cars are stacked up to get out, but it's not necessarily describing the experience on the ground, and I think that's what we as local planning commissioners provide to the process, that's why we have planning commissions and why they have the purview that we have to make these decisions is what's the real impact? You know, a traffic study informs us, and Mike, I really appreciate the changes that are looking forward based on just what's happening in this development to date and what's expected because turning out of here onto Fort Union or Wasatch is tricky. I think we all know, we've lived here for a while, most of us, that, you know, 7-Eleven, there's a lot of weird funny U-turns that happen there. And turning left onto Wasatch Boulevard with cars coming 50 miles an hour in both directions is just rife with waiting for an accident, and then you add any kind of a storm system on top of that, and it's just can we, can we make a decision here that, based on adding units or not, that or is there anything that can be done to mitigate it? I think what Mike's done, said and done is that the city's done everything they can to mitigate what they can see.
So, yeah, so I'll just, when we reviewed the old traffic study, there are conditions in there that if this were in front of us today, we would have asked for more.
Yeah, I get it.
I can't speak, and I'm not going to fault anybody because I don't know the circumstances when this was originally considered, but we can't go back and make these 28 units fix problems that I feel should have been fixed before, so in that realm of things, that's a city issue now, and I feel the city is obligated to look at those things.
Yeah.
The fact that the developer is willing to help solve one of the problems, only one, is good. You know, I did, from a process perspective, I don't think they're required to do that, and I think it's a stretch to make that a condition of the 28 units, but their willingness to do it and to fund that is good. But you're right, there are other impacts here that we will need to to prioritize as a city as this development builds out.
Yeah, you know, I think the other issue that came up in this discussion and listening to this is, you know, how impacted this Yeah, you know, I think the other issue that came up in this discussion and listening to this is is, you know, how impacted this this site already is with those um, you know, the newer uh single-family homes, the the really tall house-looking homes asking already um for permit parking on on the bump out in the road that 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 they've gained based on what the city did to to buy them that space in the street. Um, tells me that there's there's more impact on this site than may have been anticipated. Um, and i- it gives me concern um on moving forward with with any more units than than they are already entitled to. Um, I have to say.
Um, a- and just anecdotally, a lot of the existing on-street parking um over the past several months has been construction vehicles. Um, we have asked the contractor and the developer numerous times to to make sure they're not parking there. Um, you know, that that kind of the the big trucks and things like that won't always be there, but you know, I I don't know, that might be replaced with something else when.
No, I'm I'm glad you brought that up, Mike, because that actually came up in one of the comments that you shared with us that you received from um, I think, a resident near or in here. And and I noticed that too, just watching construction on that. Now that the construction is mostly done on the um on the hotel and and parking, I mean, it's changed dramatically in there. Now you can actually drive down that street and see where you're going without dodging parked um construction vehicles. Someone someone recommended in the minute in the in their comments for this this particular item was that that the site um where they're now will be moving forward with these apartments was actually used for parking for the construction vehicles for the hotel.
Yeah.
So I I think they bring up a really good point, and this goes to how you manage um the construction site with with the development team is maybe you can find a way for them to be able to get their parking off-site um because it was hideous with those construction vehicles and the people that live in there. I felt horrible for them because just as a resident, I couldn't drive through that street. Um, not not without feeling like I couldn't, it was safe. Um.
Yeah.
I thought that was a great question.
Wh- whether 112 units or 140, um, the, any project has to submit a construction plan and that involves showing us where they're going to stage materials and park equipment.
Yeah.
So so yeah, we will certainly look for those things. We don't want big trucks blocking the public right of way.
Well, no, I'm at what I'm saying, and I think this is, well, I mean, I work in construction too, so i- it's in addition to what would be a typical construction site plan is those those workers that are coming to the site every day need to be parking off-site. They they can't be onsite because it creates an unsafe condition. Um, a- and I know that's something that you can work out with them and it's beyond the bounds of this, but while we're on this topic, I thought I'd bring it up.
Sure.
Um, a quick question on the the traffic study, and I apologize, apologize, I saw it in front of me. One of the things noticed uh or noted on the study was that these additional 28 units would result in 162 trips a day. Did I read that?
Was.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
It was like 762 project trips.
That's total, yeah, so.
I know the at P, the 11 additional trips was not a concern, but the number stood out for me was like that hundred in the table, in that table, it was in the the table.
It's not.
Sorry.
That one there.
Yeah.
So we had 113 daily trips is 616. That increases by 146 um with the act- extra 28 units.
To me, that seems like a pretty significant number. I mean, I I I don't have a lot of context in this, but I I mean, to me, that just seems like pretty big number. Or not.
Yes, which is why we ask um for the updated traffic studies. The trips, there are different times a day. They're going in, they're going out, they're going different directions. And and that's all reflected here. So the the 616 was and all the conditions associated that was approved in 2015. So so the the real analysis here is what's the added impact of 146 extra trips? And and the conclusion that our city engineer said, yeah, there's there's no reason to uh to question it is based on this information and based on the conditions that were approved previously, that they're not making anything quantifiably worse. They're adding traffic, they're adding cars, but it doesn't, it doesn't drop the level of service of these intersections beyond what it was anticipated before.
Okay.
I just, I do think, Mike, that if we're if we're adding, if we're assessing traffic right now versus 2016, the other conditions I completely understand. But I think if you're adding, if you're going to add more traffic, you have to base it on the current traffic conditions. I think that's a reasonable standard that would be would be held up in any format that we would have to to say, okay, well, it many things is like, well, the condition at the time, I completely understand that. And especially when we're talking about the whole developments relative to the just the impact of this project, I completely support that. But I do think the traffic has to be in the context of we are dealing with a very different traffic situation at that intersection and the stuff re- uh in a radius around there, probably more significantly than anywhere else in our city. And it's it's much more than 3% different than it was uh in 2016.
Yeah, well, well, that's why we, they did the updated trip study of last week. Uh, that that was, you know, that that was their response to you validate that this data is still accurate. They they got new data.
So I I I just want to give my two cents on this. Um, when when I went to review the package and and saw the uh the uh traffic generation study, one of the first things I did was look at the um Cottonwood Heights Transportation Management Plan, and I looked at the 2050, like, to build or like no build plan, which is like uh the basically the intersection of Fort Union and Wasatch North on Wasatch North is is failed. If we build nothing. Um, a- and that that immediately kind of stood out to me as like, okay, this is, this is a pretty significant intersection of even if we don't approve anything ever again for the next 30 years, we still have we still have issues. And the actual uh TGS that they that they produce, I I agree with you. One of the first things that stood out to me and it was like I looked down and I saw a condition clear and and to me like, yeah, it's October, weather's awesome. Um, you know, a lot more people probably are out, you know, biking, walking or whatever else versus versus in cars because of inclement weather. I I have I have concerns about that because traffic studies are just, you know, they're they're seeing through rose colored colored glasses. The the second thing that stood out to me, and I saw this in the TNP, um, and also I I did some additional research at UTA is I'm I'm concerned that um was the the traffic impact study the correct one, because it looks like it was a level one, not a level two?
I will say I'm not a traffic engineer, but we had our city engineer review it and he he was comfortable with the analysis they provided.
So based on, I mean, the 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 triggers are based on average daily trips. And and so it looked like it looked like they did a level one, which should have, and it probably should have been a level two. So that that was a concern.
I I rely on our internal experts because I am not a traffic.
I I'm not, I'm not either.
I read what I have and I give it to the engineer.
That that was, that was one concern that I had is is, you know, it certainly looked like every legitimate traffic set I've ever looked at, but it just, it looked like it it was missing a a few things based on the average daily trips.
Yeah.
Which is the trigger. Um. Yeah, and you know, one one of the, can we, can we go to the, oh, that's the right slide. Right, you know, one of the concerns I have, obviously, it's neither here nor there is, um, you know, you, it's it's a, it's a mixed-use site, but it's a, it's a fairly low density of of actual mix of uses in terms of the actual retail and and whatever else. And so you have a fair number of of you know, units in terms of the apartments and family homes, hotel, et cetera. But you know, you you have a 12,000 square foot restaurant and 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 a small amount of retail, which is just going to generate more trips versus being able to surface it all on-site. But um that's not before, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I think that I just want to reiterate, Mike, what you said is I think we need to keep our focus as well as we're talking about these 28 additional units. We can't go back and change what was previously, as much as we'd like to to change what was previously approved, all we're looking at is can these 28
Yeah.
additional.
Exactly right.
Additional units. Um, and and to me, I I'm understanding it better now. Um, and based on what the city engineer has said as well, is that it it sounds like that these 28 additional units, as much as none of us would like to see more traffic, right? Because it's just going to cause more problems, it's it's negligible. I mean, it's not a huge, it's going to be an impact, but not.
The, yeah, I think a way of saying it is the the impact of all of these uses with 140 units instead of 113, it is not tangibly different than the impact of all of these uses with 113.
That's at Wasatch and Fort Union. So I think, you know, we also have a lot of residents in between what that that those two parameters um that will be affected and that's.
Yeah, this was, you know, trip generation for the Canyon Center project, you just based on the old. Yeah.
Yeah, and now we have actual residents in there in addition to the to those that have been living in the Canyon um racket club condos for since the seventies. Um, and this the street that it fronts onto on Racket Club, so.
And I I'm actually, I'm actually to the developers' benefit, I I'm actually curious to see because of the mix of of the one and two-bedroom mix in terms of of it clearly is trying to satisfy that that, you know, middle housing market that Utah so desperately needs. Um, a- and you know, cer- certainly, I you know, in the in the general area, it it's a, it's a need that that we don't have a surplus of. Um, but I'm I'm curious for the families that would move into those. Are the, is the IT 2017 standards accurate anymore, given all the work from home and and whatnot, when you're talking about a one-bedroom? You know, rental versus versus a single-family home? Because I mean, the world has, the world has changed in the last 18 months and and given the size of home and they offering, I'm actually curious if any of, any of the methodologies that accurate. Obviously, that's what we have to go with, but.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything that's caught up with that yet, Jonathan. It's, you know.
Mike, this is oh.
So go ahead, Tessie.
I was going to change the subject.
Please do.
Um, Mike, does the city have a mechanism to address this uh level F intersection independent of this development?
Yeah.
And and what does that timeframe look like if if we if we separate the city improving that intersection versus working with the developer to improve that intersection?
I think it's a, it's probably a council and a budget decision. And if the funds are there and the council signs off on it, you know, we could move forward uh whenever you, you know, given the 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 seasonal changes, you know, whenever the weather permitting and and there's budget and direction in place to do it, we we could do it. I also think we could, we can ask the the developer to assist with it well before the the apartment building is built. I don't know that it needs to be tied to the actual construction. Obviously, that I I don't know that we can require that, but um you know, he did seem willing to uh to fund that and work with the city on it.
Realistically, given the city's hundreds or thousands of other intersections, how many other level F intersections would potentially be in front of this one for the city to actually make an improvement or a budget allocation?
Then I'm aware, um, w- we don't have any, you know, major projects like that on our capital budget right now or capital plan. The the road projects being worked on right now are the the standard maintenance and upkeep, resealing and slurry and crack seal of roads. Um, a- and some stormwater projects, but I don't know that that, and I would have to verify. I don't, I don't think we have any, you know, major intersection improvements. Uh, you know, on the books and scheduled outside of the ones that we have grant funding for and are already moving forward, like the Roundabout um a- and other, you know, grant-funded projects. So if this were a a city-funded project, this I I think could just be done as a a one-off uh improvement.
For my education, what exactly would happen with to change how it looks?
Well, there's there's a few ways to do it. You can put a sign that says no left turn, or you can put a physical
Like a barrier?
Physical concrete raised curb system that that goes out far enough to to physically prohibit a left turn there.
Okay, all right.
Which is the most effective way. It's also the most permanent way. You know, signs require enforcement, which is a a whole challenge.
But just building a a curb, cement curb kind of.
It's a raised, yeah.
Okay, I know what you mean. Okay, thank you.
So guys, we've got about two minutes left here before we uh transition to business meeting. Um, and we will have a chance to continue this discussion um as this is our, basically our only agenda item in our business meeting. Any other topics of discussion before we close this meeting out and move to a business meeting?
Now, ju- just quickly, um, the the commission, it's scheduled for hearing and potential action. You you can continue. You can request additional information. We staff would just request that it pertains to the 28 units and the impact that has. Our next meeting is in another two weeks, so if if we need additional information and and that would help, um, then that's certainly within the commission's authority to ask for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Your turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Hi, the meeting is adjourned and we'll see you again in our business meeting in just a minute or two.